I can't hear anything.
That's why I didn't look at the noise.
Here.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Awesome. Welcome.
Are we getting? Yeah, we had a slight technical issue and so everything up to now was not actually on the recording, but all we did was roll call on the pledge, so.
All right, so we will continue on. So currently, we're looking at the meeting minutes for December 1st, 2022. Anybody has any corrections or amendments to it?
I was absent.
Okay. Nobody has any corrections or concerns? We'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. I guess at this point, we'll do a roll call vote since we are not all in the same room.
All right, all in, well, again, I guess so. Commissioner Wood?
Uh, yeah.
Commissioner Melcher?
Got seen.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
All right, so our minutes are approved. We will be going on to our first public hearing tonight, which is SD 20-01, looking for an extension to their to their original application. Looks like we've exhausted the timeline, so it's coming back to the planning commission. Do you want to go ahead and just take over on that, Angela?
Thank you.
Oh, let me go ahead and open the public hearing for SD 21, or 20-01 at 6:35. Okay.
So the applicants are coming to you with an extension. There has been Duck Hollow Phase, are we on two and Phase Three, came to you guys a while ago. However, they've had some wetland delineation issues, some different things, just getting certified, and so they've had to do an extension for these plans. And they've already done one, so once you go past a year, it has to come in front of the planning commission. So per Sweet Home Municipal Code, now this is the former code because this was done under the former code, so it's 1616080 extensions. So the planning commission may grant an extension of up to 12 months of a tentative subdivision plan approval, or if the tentative plan approval provides a phase development, an extension of up to 12 months of a tentative plan approval with respect to the phase, then being developed. If it is determined that the change of the condition for which the applicant was not responsible would prevent the applicant from obtaining final plot approval within the original timeline, we did do one extension, and so further extensions of up to one year each, but not to exceed 10 years from the date of original approval, as per ORS 92.0403, may be granted by the planning commission if special circumstances are shown by the applicant. And so the applicant is here to ask for an additional extension for this code.
All right. So quickly, we're going to go through some so the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So with that being read in, and the staff report, do any of the planning commission have any personal bias in regard to this application?
No.
No.
I have none. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
I have none. Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
Are we getting Commissioner Branson's responses in regards to these?
No on all, no on all the questions.
Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, we'll go ahead and just have our applicant, by the way, thank you for coming. It'd be surprising if the applicants don't come.
Thank you.
For the record, if you could just state your name and address.
So, excuse my voice tonight. My name is Laura LaRocque. I'm with Udell Engineering. I'm the applicant's representative. So as Angela stated, we have submitted for a wetland permit. There were some rule changes at the state level with the wetland permitting that kind of delayed to see how those would turn out. We now have final verdict on those, and we're still moving forward with that permit process. Typically, those are not short. They usually take six months to nine months to complete. So all the documentation on our end is complete and submitted. Just looking for review and approval of that, and then actual construction plans being submitted to the city for improvement of all the public infrastructure that's required before we can move to a final plat. So we anticipate that to be completed by the end of this year for the first phase, and then the following year for Phase Two. So we're just asking for that extension.
All right. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicants, for the applicant's representative? All right. If you're going to hang up for a second, that's fine, too. So we will go ahead and open it up for any proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application. And there are none. Opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against the application. And neutral testimony, not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. And there's none. So we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing for discussion amongst the planning commission. We'll close the public hearing at 6:39. Sounds like it's out of their hands. That's been, I'm sure, somebody could track it down to a COVID-based issue and just overlogged departments. I guess at this point, we decide if it would, what kind of extension it would be. There's not a specific timeframe being asked for, or is it?
Yes, so new approval, there's new approval deadlines down there below.
Oh, right.
And so if you approve of those deadlines, that's what you would be voting.
Okay, so Phase One through December 31st, 2023, Phase Two, December 31st, 2024. Basically, a one-year and a two-year.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I would move to approve the applicant's request for a land use approval extension of the Duck Hollow Three, Phases One, from December 32, I'm sorry, December 31st, 2023, and Phase Two to December 31st, 2024.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the extension of both phases. Go ahead and go over to Angela for a roll call vote.
Mr. Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Mr. Melcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
All right, you have your extension. Thank you.
Commissioner Parker, I do have a copy of that up there for your signature.
Okay, yes, I saw it in the folder. Excuse me. All right, so moving on. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing for application CU 22-12 at 6:41. And the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the modifications of the property line adjustment for a public park in a residential zone. A conditional use application shall be processed if a proposed change results in a change to the lot or partial boundaries if there is an increase in the amount of operational activity per Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.060A. The applicant applied for a property line adjustment, PLA 22-11, 22-12, 22-13, 22-14, and 22-15. The subject properties are in a residential low-density R1 zone. So the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Do any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regard to this application?
No.
I do not.
No.
I have none. Commissioner Branson?
None.
Okay, any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
None.
Okay, thank you. Any ex parte information?
None.
No.
None.
I have none. All right, so we need to head over to the staff report.
So this is a conditional use for property line adjustments, because as done in the past, this is a resident, it's a zone residential. However, we will be changing that soon with our new code. We will be doing a zone change to public, so we will no longer have to keep doing this. The other part of this is that we are looking to do some upgrades in Northside Park, and in order to do that, we need to have our property lines fixed. One mistake, one, it's not really a mistake, but one thing that probably should have been kept out of this because it's not part of the conditional use is the dog park portion of it. Why I put that in there, I do not know. That is my fault for confusing everybody. So you will notice that the public comment letters are for the dog park. The dog park was actually decided upon and actually installed via the Park and Tree Committee, so that is actually not part of this application. That was, I don't know what I was typing. So this approval is, like I said, the property line adjustments have been completed. This is just to prove that you guys are okay with the property line adjustments as we did them and the conditional use. And if you needed, I gave you copies of the maps, so if you want further explanation of what we did and why, please let me know, but it's pretty just simple, turning six lots into one.
Basically, if I'm correct, this is to allow for easier placement of structures and things of that nature in the future.
We would have to continue to keep coming back to you guys each time.
With setbacks and going off. And I did purposely omit the dog park portion.
It is a missed staff report, though, so, yes. Yes, and I didn't realize it until we started getting letters, and I was like, why are we getting letters? And then I didn't realize I put "and" as proposing a dog park, because that's not part of this. It's just in my head. We were doing the dog park, and so we're making sure that we have our ducks-in-a-row property lines, so that was, so I apologize for the confusion.
Should have used ducks in a row on the last. All right, does anybody have any questions for staff? So so this, this is also something that was of a similar nature to St. Key Park.
Correct, we did the same process.
To allow for that kind of modification and remodel, I guess, for lack of a better term.
Correct, we have multiple tax lots at St. Key Park, and we combined them.
This is something we run into a lot in Sweet Home, especially with properties that have been owned by the city for a long time. And then this is actually something that's present in a lot of private property, where it's been a while since it's been developed. We have a number of properties where you have one owner of several separate parcels, but they've developed it as if it's one parcel. And in some cases, you have property lines even going right through the middle buildings. And we try to encourage those folks, anytime they develop or make any changes, to do a property line adjustment, to put everything the way it should be. And we're trying to set that example as the city to say, hey, this is, this is important. It makes development a lot easier to have everything just be one single parcel.
Well, I'm sure in some, some instances, it's less paperwork in the long run to be doing one tax lot.
Exactly.
Paperwork instead of stuff.
And then for any, just in case there's anyone listening and thinking about doing their own property line adjustment, they do not need to come to the planning commission to do a property line adjustment. The only reason this is necessary is because it is a park use in a residential zone. But for anybody else wanting to do a property line adjustment, chances are, they can do it entirely just with staff, and it would only take a couple of weeks.
That's good information.
Well, we have a reporter, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, no. That wouldn't be bad information to have in the paper either, so.
It's not exactly an exciting news story.
We're not really the juicy.
If it's a slow news day, go ahead.
All right, so do we want, do we have a representative to be our applicant, or we will continue through our required?
I, I would say that my, my comments tonight would probably serve as the applicant testimony.
All right.
This is something that's been authorized by the city council to, for the city manager to sign the application. And so as the property owner, the city council has authorized this as the applicant, not as the approving agency. So it comes to you to approve.
All right, so we will make the assumption that the staff report also included the applicant's testimony, and we will go on to opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application. There are none. Opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition to the application. And neutral testimony, those wishing to speak not in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. All right, we will go ahead and close the public hearing for CU 22-12 at 6:49. Discussion amongst the commission. So do we want to address these as individual things as, well, it's not, it's just conditional use.
It's a conditional use for the entire.
The property line adjustments are done.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
If you say no, then we'll have to disconnect them all.
Power runs rampant. I guess I'm, I'm for it in the sense that I like to see lot lines cleaned up and stuff. I am kind of a little quirky, weird concern with the shape of a lot, although that doesn't mean that it can't be chunked into two pieces later at some point. Just the same as it's being put into one right now. And especially with the one lot line that goes right through the tennis court.
Yeah.
That's definitely more of a structure than it is just a fence, so I, I would have to be in favor of it, just because of that, so.
I would agree.
And I would be in favor of it.
Well, it's a, it's a city improvement.
Absolutely.
So what's not, so, so I'm in favor of the city improvement.
I suspect the city staff has given considerable thought, too.
It's just my OCD to the shape.
It's an odd shape.
The hammer generation.
Oh, it's a hammer?
That's what it looks like to me.
All right, I'll hear it for Thor's heart.
We're going to name it tonight, too. That's our conditional approval.
There we go.
You have the authority, unfortunately. That would be fun. I don't think you want me naming stuff.
So I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I move to approve application CU 22-12, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Pardon me, I did not have my head looking up. Was it Laura or Jane?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood. Okay. All right. Commissioner Branson?
I agree.
Commissioner Wood?
I agree.
Commissioner Melcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Thank you. So on a side note to that, if you haven't gone out to see the dog park, the fence is up. There's some signage up. Eventually, we will be putting some shade trees in, but obviously, there's still some work to go, but there is an actual dog park now.
Wow, and it's open?
So.
Was there a grand opening?
It's a soft opening.
Okay.
In the spring.
Yeah, so we're hoping to do our Arbor Day celebration down at Northside Park, not only to introduce the dog park, but we will be planting some trees, but just to reintroduce people to the amenities at Northside Park.
Oh, no kidding.
You know, there are, there's racquetball, there's tennis, there's, I think, a half-court, there's a playground, there's river access. Now there's a dog park and a restroom. So many people do not know that that park is existing and do not know that the amenities of that park. And so our hope is to do Arbor Day down there and invite the public to come and show off the park a little bit, so.
I'm also going to assume that as part of this whole redo for the park, that lighting will be part of that package at some point.
As budget allows.
It's, it's on the task list of things that the Park and Tree Committee identified for that park, but obviously, it is, as budget allows, yeah.
On that note, one thing that's happening, that's coming about, we did get a grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for an update to our park system master plan. And so we are about to put out the, we have put out an advertisement for a request for proposals for firms to complete that work, and we hope that that will be at least started by the spring. And that'll be an opportunity for all of public, you included, to, to give your input on what amenities you think parks should have, what improvements our parks need, where parks, where future parks should be, et cetera. The intent behind a park master plan is to have a document that's gone through the public process, so it has lots of people weighing in on it. And it, it should provide a prioritized list of, of the improvements that the public desires to have in parks, so it gives staff a good roadmap for the future, especially now that we have system development charges coming from housing and so forth, that those do include some parks funding, and it does at least give us somewhat of a, of a funding source for some park improvement. So that's something to keep your eyes out for, and it'll be exciting, as exciting as planning gets.
Well, we have the new housing analysis, too, which gives us a really great, you know, idea of what's available or what we really build, where we don't need to build.
And one of the, and one of the goals of all these different plans, I mean, you should have master plans in place for this, for transportation, for water, for wastewater, for stormwater, and as well as our comprehensive plan and development code, and all of those should take each other into account and, and work fairly seamlessly together. That's the goal. And so as we update these things, the intent is to make sure that it takes into account housing, takes into account stormwater, and where do we have storm tension basins, and could those be used as open space and so forth.
When's the housing analysis? When are they coming back? That's this month or next month?
I think originally, we were hoping for today, but.
Yeah, we put it off.
I don't know if it's going to be the night either. I think it's the first of February.
Yeah, I think it's the first.
I will verify with him, but.
And that should be the final draft.
Yeah.
So if you want to move ahead to, so development code amendments and revisions, if I never have to see a fillable form again, I will be so happy. But as I've been going through redoing applications, because I also have to redo the building permit checklist because they pertained to planning, also, I have found some additional errors and different things, and so I'm keeping a file right now of the ones that I find. As soon as I think I'm done, I will have Blair review them, and then we will be coming to you with some amendments. The first meeting in February, first meeting, I should have written it down, we are hoping to have the food trailer code to you. I was hoping it would be this one, but I forgot that I have to submit to DLCD 35 days in advance. And so while I didn't forget, I just got a little excited about bringing it to you and went, oh, yeah, noticing, got to go back and do the legal thing. So it's ready to go, though. It's ready for you to review. I just had to submit it to them, and so you guys shall be reviewing it here shortly. And the other amendments are just minor things, you know, noticing inconsistency in wording, and we kept the recreation commercial zone. However, some of the other, like different heights and setbacks, you know, we changed it to minimum five, total 12, while it still says five and 13. So just minor inconsistencies that I've found as I've been going through it. So that's mostly what you're going to be saying with the amendments, nothing real. And adding back in annexations.
Right.
That got removed.
I can.
Yeah.
How did we not see that?
I don't know.
Yeah, well, there's some, there's some things like that that are not officially land use matters, but they kind of are land use matters, such as street vacations.
Yeah.
Being in there. But at the same time, we didn't have, we had something in our code for street vacations, which was inadvertently left out when we put the new code in. But at the same time, we never had anything for street dedications, and so we were just kind of winging it. So we want to correct that and have the same paragraph applied to both, because they're kind of the same thing, just to get one from reverse of the other. So little things like that, nothing earth-shattering, but we want to clean things up a little bit more. And when you put in a massive change to the code like that, it's inevitable that there will be something that is not quite thought of, because it's a lot of, you read the whole thing. It's a whole lot to deal with.
I'm impressed that you can still find things that are different when you analyze.
Well, a lot of it, it has been helping to do the checklist, because we have site plan checklists. And so my planning, I go through the site plan that building gives me, so I have the checklist for each zone. And so I had to go back through and redo all my, so as I'm going through it, I went, oh, you know, oh, this needs to be this, or this needs to be that. And, which was good, because it not only helped me work through, but find stuff in our code that isn't, I don't work with every single zone every single day. I tell you what, I know street standards code really well.
Yeah.
And it's not, for good reasons, most of it's not. But that's it, there's a lot of new stuff in that street standards, and so I've gotten to know it really well. And so a lot of this, although I roll my eyes and I laugh about it, it actually has helped me gauge, I can jump a lot quicker to when people ask me questions, because I've had to go through it so many times and in so much detail. So, which has been, in essence, a blessing, as well as, you know, I'd really like to put it away someday, but it's not going to happen.
So are we going to explore, like, a book-on-page version and have this read by somebody famous?
That would be nice.
Start submitting names of celebrities you know.
One of the other things on my task list, not a huge priority, but in revising a lot of this stuff, our comp plan will have to be revised also. I will start working on it. Obviously, the housing needs analysis chapters will get updated also, but there's things that we've needed to add in amendments and stuff for a while now. So I'll be, that's on my task list to work on also in the next coming months, is to try to get everything working together.
Yeah, and let's keep that in perspective, that's not a comp plan revision. It's, it's the act, just updating the actual document with the revisions that have already been made.
Yeah.
We will continue to include a comprehensive plan update in our budget requests, as we are starting to do every year. And if funding allows, we will hopefully get that done.
I do time it right around the corner.
Yes.
If you're clarifying, that would have been a little too exciting.
So, yeah, don't get too excited.
Well, I will say in the last couple of years, it does feel like we're cleaning up and getting a lot of listings tied up, which is nice, because it's getting us up to date.
Right, and fortunately for a lot of this, we've been able to get some grant funding to cover the cost. The unfortunate thing is that for some reason, there's no grants available for comp plan updates, which is kind of like the tail wag on the dog, which is kind of frustrating, but we do what we can.
Will we need a consultant for these preliminary revisions?
No, this is just taking things that we already have documented.
Okay.
These things have been adopted and we know where they go, and it's basically formatting the document.
Okay.
It's just including all the amendments that we've done and actually putting them into the document. It just, it hasn't been done for many years, and so I'm just, because we have enough now, I might as well just go ahead and do it.
Get rid of the annoying font while we're at it.
Don't do a document in Comic Sans.
It's gonna be all, it's gonna be all Pyris.
But that's, you know, it's, the next probably six months, I'm still gonna be working on code stuff. I mean, we're finding stuff on the website, I'm like, oops, missed that, you know, so there's, anything I find, you know, we're trying to update it as quickly as possible. Some things I don't find until I need them, and so we're doing our best to kind of weed through it and get it out on the interwebs and make sure everybody has the appropriate documentation, so. Yeah, and we will be hopefully adding a new permit tech soon, so getting them on board and working with me.
I guess just some staff updates.
Oh, yeah.
Well, since you bring it up, Adam, our building permit technician, who's been fantastic in the role, we really appreciate him, and taking a different role with the city, he's now the communications manager. And so he'll be handling, he's will be handling all of the city's communications and IT stuff. IT, meaning he'll be interfacing with the consultants that we have for IT stuff. And so he's still been, he's been in that role for about a month now, and he's still been doing his previous job at the same time. So we have interviewed some folks, and hopefully we'll have a new permit technician starting soon, in the next, hopefully next couple of weeks or more. At the same time, those who know, those of you who know Joe Grable, we have, he is planning retirement. And we have more or less, more or less official dates, so we do have actually a, the, his position will, he's the staff engineer, his position will be, will start somewhat out as an engineering tech to, to take his place. And we actually already have that person hired, and they're starting Monday. So we'll have about a month and a half or so of overlap to hopefully get as much out of Joe's head as we can, or.
I was gonna say, it takes way more than a month and a half to transfer that institution.
It does, well, we've known this was coming for the past couple of years, and so we have been trying to document as much as we can of the institutional memory that will be.
Well, hopefully he's not moving away anytime soon.
No, he, I mean, he's made it clear.
We don't bug him too much. We'll bug him.
Maybe clearly he's still gonna be around, and he's happy to help out where possible, but at the same time, I don't want to rely too much on him.
Being able to turn around and just say, hey, Joe, what year was this put in? And he knows, go like that.
The history.
Yeah, he knows a lot about a lot of things in this town, and what happens, and who did them, and when and why, and so that's, he's, it's a value.
He needs to write a memoir.
Well, I'll have to say, aside from Joe retiring, I am pleased to hear that people here at the city are moving up instead of out. So obviously, we're doing something right now that people are sticking around.
Well, and I think we, the culture of the organization is very much appreciative of merit and acquired experience and acquired skills. And so we like to reward that, and appreciate that, so it's great to see people moving up internally.
Yeah.
And we, we've still been able to attract some fairly good candidates for being hired, so that's great. We do need to update you on the transportation system plan. We've, that process has finally started, so work is underway. As a part of that, there is a public advisory committee that's, that's a part of the process. That's, that committee will meet several times over the process to hear information from the consultants and kind of give the local point of view on transportation, the transportation, I don't know, the transportation system in general. So as a part of that, there are a number of people, of organizations that we are looking for representatives from to serve on the public advisory committee, make sure that the city council is represented, and that the school district, and the fire district, all the, all the local organizations that we have, to make sure they have a voice in this, in this process. And so as part of that, we would like to have at least one member of the planning commission serve on that advisory committee. And I don't know that, do we need to have a decision? We, it would be good to have a decision sooner than later, so this is coming, I don't want to spring this on you and have you figure it out right now. But if there are any of you in particular that are interested in, especially in transportation, that would like to serve in that capacity, we would love to hear about it, and as a body, if there is, if there's disagreement, I guess, over who should serve in that, it'd be good to have your support from one way or another.
What's the timeframe for the term?
The timeframe, it's, it's gonna be over the whole next year, basically.
Are they planning like a monthly, or?
I believe the meeting schedule, there, there are identified meeting times, and I don't, forgive me, I don't have those right in front of me right now. But I believe it's like four or five meetings.
It went to quieter or something.
It's not, it's not a huge timeframe limit. And we're trying to adapt it to existing meetings as much as possible, but. Angela's looking it up to see what we have on the project calendar. Okay, we can get, we can get back to you about that, but it's, it shouldn't be much, definitely not more than once a month, likely about once a quarter.
I would be interested in that role.
We have, we have one for sure that's interested.
Any others, or?
I'm interested.
I was city staff to the city of Lebanon's transportation system plan update, and through the public advisory committees and technical advisory committees, so I'm familiar with it.
We have a couple of interested bodies at the moment, we can, we can table it for later too, and so we'll find out exactly what the time commitment is and see if anybody else would be interested.
We're stepping forward.
We have another meeting scheduled for the 19th.
And so.
I know we can at least wait until then, so.
Sure.
Why don't, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll get a little bit more information for you on the time commitment, and then.
Who's gonna run the meeting?
That's a good question. Typically with this, it'll probably be, it'll probably be a staff member in name at least, running the meeting, but most of the heavy lifting will be the consultants, with the information they're providing, how they're fitting things into their framework. Okay, we'll bring that back to you at the next meeting.
Thanks, thank you.
But I think as far as staff updates, that's about it.
What do we have coming in January on the 19th?
A vacation of right of way.
There's been an application for the vacation of Redwood Street just to the west of 54th.
Yeah, it's down there.
53rd, it's, it's an undeveloped portion of Redwood. It, it actually is, so there's no, there's no infrastructure in place at all. There's no water lines, through lines, no curbing, no pavement, nothing. It's, driving by, you wouldn't even notice it's a street, but it is dedicated right of way right now. However, the topography makes it extremely unlikely that there will ever be a street there, because it would just be too expensive to build. And so neighboring property owners are proposing that they have other means of accessing the property, and they're proposing that it be vacated so that it'll allow for better development of housing. Anyway, that is, the, the, the city council heard the application and has referred it to the planning commission. Heard the request and has referred it to the planning commission, so we're going through the process for that. The process that we inadvertently left out of our development code. However, it is governed by state law as well, so we're not operating completely outside of the law. We have state laws that we're following, just local ordinance would make it a little bit easier.
Yeah. And just as a humorous note, I asked Joe today how the street sign for Redwood came about off 53rd, since there is no street right there. He said he actually has a picture in the paper of him putting that street sign in.
Oh, really?
Really?
So I'm gonna have to go locate that, because, yeah.
Find that.
He said that they wanted it down there, but because that was the railroad right of way, that they had to put it where the street was supposed to go, and there was actually a picture of Joe putting.
So you're telling me there's a street sign there with no street?
Yeah, there's, it's black.
Wow.
I put the vacation notice up against it, so.
So can we, as, as Joe leaves the city, can he take Redwood with him?
I asked him about that.
We should just go put it in his front yard.
We can all sign it.
Yes.
I just thought I would share that, because we just happened to have that conversation about why the street sign was there, and he told me he actually has a picture in the newspaper of him when they installed that sign, so.
Alright, if there's no further business from staff or commissioners with questions, go ahead and adjourn the meeting, planning commission meeting for January 5th, 2023 at 7:13.
I don't think I've heard that yet.
Unofficially, I move that we call it either Thor's Side Park.